Welcome, everybody, to the Board of Education's November 4th, 2024 Regular Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Fauntine Ridley.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a few announcements before we begin our meeting. Their next policy review meeting is scheduled for Friday, November 22nd at 10:00 a.m. in this boardroom. And since this is our last and only meeting in November, I want to wish all of our students, families, staff, and community a happy Thanksgiving. It was just Halloween. I can't believe we're already at the holidays. I hope everyone will enjoy a few days of downtime to spend with their family and loved ones. And our schools will be closed November 27th through the 29th for holiday break. As a reminder, this meeting will be a combination of our work session and regular session meeting to allow board members to attend TSBA Leadership Conference and Annual Convention, November 7th through 10th in Nashville. So before I move on to changes to the agenda, I want to just take a moment to assure everyone that even though we are combining our meetings tonight, we will take all of the time that is necessary to hear from everyone who is registered for a public forum and also have as much board discussion as is necessary on each item before voting. Once we approve our agenda, Superintendent Ryswick will make his report. And then we'll hear from Ms. Christie on the Strategic Plan Committee update. And then I will offer each one of the consent agenda items for discussion and questions. Once there is no more discussion on consent agenda items, Ms. Cottney will read the consent agenda into the record. I will accept a motion, and then we will vote on the consent agenda. We will do the rest of our items just like any other regular session meeting. With that, are there any requested changes to the agenda? Seeing there's none, do we have a motion to accept the agenda? Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Ryswick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. As always, appreciate the time to share some updates. This is not usually what I do, but I plan to be brief tonight, so I only have a few bullet points. So I know the reason for that is we recently spent two days together at the board's annual workshop. We've gotten to hear a lot from our team over that time. It was two really good days, but there was a lot of stuff that we talked about in that. So saw everything from results to the literacy landscape analysis and facility assessments to planning and development of our next five-year strategic plan, and it was definitely packed. Appreciate you all taking the time to have that meeting. Time well spent for us as a staff, for sure. The month of November is always about giving thanks. I do want to take a moment and thank each of you for your leadership and for choosing to give your time and service to the students of Knox County Schools. Thank you for that. I firmly believe that service is a calling, and appreciate each one of you for answering that call and bringing what you think's best for kids every day to every board meeting that we have, and really appreciate that for sure. Excited about tomorrow. We're also taking a moment to honor our veterans and U.S. service members on the KCS staff. We'll be at Gibbs Middle School to recognize our employees who have answered the call to serve in more ways than one, and want to encourage any of you who are able to attend to be able to be at that. This is actually our second year that we've done this. It was a really good event last year at Harden Valley, so we're looking forward to recognizing those folks who have served or are currently serving and also working for Knox County Schools. And as Ms. Henderson said, a reminder that schools will be closed tomorrow for a scheduled in-service day. In KCS, actually, you were talking about Thanksgiving, so sorry.
So many holidays.
Yeah, so many holidays. Get Veterans Day in there, we get all these in there. So as a reminder, how about this, schools will be closed tomorrow for a scheduled in-service day, and KCS will be closed November 27th through 29th for Thanksgiving. There we go, it's in there. Students look forward to seeing you back at school on Wednesday, this Wednesday. It's kind of confusing because that's a lot of dates. So tomorrow, students, there's no school. It'll be an in-service day, Wednesday, come back to school, and also, we have Thanksgiving at the end of this month, how about that? Madam Chair, that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Ryswick. Ms. Christie, do you have a strategic plan update?
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, as you recall, we received preliminary results from our strategic plan stakeholder engagement surveys at our annual workshop on October 25th, and will be receiving the final compilation of survey responses from students and families, staff and community members in the near future. We were also led through submission and visioning exercises at the workshop by Accenture, which was fun. Thank you all for participating in that and to start laying the foundation for any changes we may want to make to our current mission and vision statements so that those can be a part of the final new five-year strategic plan when it is adopted. As Accenture starts drafting the new plan for consideration, the Strategic Plan Committee will be meeting and working closely with them on the draft plan, and we look forward to completing your work as the plan is finalized for the board's consideration in the spring.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, we will now move into consent agenda. So I'm going to read each item, just like in a workshop, and then when we get to the end of all of the consent agenda, we will vote on it as a consent agenda. So moving into item C, do we have any questions on one or two? Mr. Triplett?
Yes. Dr. Wilson, quick question for you, or maybe, I'm not sure who, but I noticed on the compliance report, obviously, the only thing we're out of compliance with, which we knew we would be, is the new law around library collections and materials, all of that. We know that's a task, but also, have we gotten anywhere in removing any books? Are we, you know, what's the status of that? I see something here about November 29th, all of that. Where are we at on that?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Yeah. Madam Chair and Mr. Triplett. So yes, we actually are in process. I actually had my first meeting today on the kind of first round of looking at what has been kind of identified so far. And to your question originally, yes, compliance, we have talked about it from the beginning as being a process. You know, we took the first start of the year once librarians came back on contract, and then have done some initial activities since the school year started, really around training them to be able to look at their collections under this new standard. With the change to the Age Appropriate Materials Act, it did bring some clarity and some additional parameters that we have to look at for those collections, and so we've been really walking them as a group through a process of how does that now look? Because that will be a process they'll have to adopt, really to manage their collections moving forward, right? As they think about new purchases and everything. So through that process, we have taken them through some exercises where they have identified a list of books that they're essentially submitting to a district team to look at and say, hey, we've identified these pieces, is this qualified, is it not? And we're going through that at our first attempt to apply this new standard to those books, and so we've just begun that process. We're still hopeful that we'll be sort of at the end of November coming forward with some sort of a final assessment of that. And then the plan from there, once we kind of have this first grasp, is for our librarians as part of their management collection to continue to apply this standard, and we're going to kind of consolidate what we have reported up from our schools on a quarterly basis, and so should be somewhat of a quarterly basis once we hit our stride here of consolidating what's submitted, taking a glance at it again to look at, is it meeting that standard of the law, and those things are lifted up. But that's kind of where we are in the timeline of the process right now.
So that first run through the library should be done by the 29th?
Right now, that's our date we had kind of put out there. I mean, again, coming back to the compliance report really is the timeline of the compliance report, and so we're still working towards that date, yes.
Good, perfect, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Ms. Christie?
Mine is on the next item, actually.
Oh, number two?
Were we done with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So just board members, if you have never been to one of the nutrition food shows, save the date, February 13th. I know Brett Foster and her team, that's an incredible amount of work on this, but it is really fun because a lot of the students go, and it's just fun to see them engaging as well. So if you can and have the opportunity to go, it is a fun event.
I agree. I was going to bring that up and just highlight that as well. And I get several questions from students. I just talked to a Boy Scout two weeks ago, I think Garfield and I talked, or Dr. Adams and I talked about this. So I had a Boy Scout call me two weeks ago, and a lot of times when the Boy Scouts call me, one of their issues they like to talk about for one of their merit badges is lunches and food, and so I always talk to them about this event because it's really cool, and they're excited about it, so I definitely encourage y'all to go as well. All right, moving on to items three or four. Do we have any discussion on three or four? Okay. Five or six? Seven or eight? Oh, Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
This is more for just the point of information. When it talks about, on number eight?
Okay.
When it talks about identified data related to the teacher workforce, what kind of data is that?
Ms. Himmelgarn?
Madam Chair, Ms. Fontenot Ridley, it's a lot of data on recruitment and retention, so it would be our number of employees, number of applicants, demographics of employees and candidates. It's on the, it's an analysis of the teacher workforce, so it's asking for similar information across all participating districts, and then we'll get a report at the end of that.
So not necessarily any identifying or personal information?
I'll have to check with Mr. Moesman on that. I believe that there would be identifying information. I don't know if we give names specifically, there would be identifying information. Mr. Moesman, do you know the answer to that?
I guess names are pretty identifying, right?
Right.
If you're not given the names.
Right.
Okay. There would be identifying information for the purposes of analysis so that we can track trends in things like evaluation, retention, those types of things, but there wouldn't be any single staff member identified in the analysis that we as a district get back. So for the purposes of researchers, they would have access to that identifying information, but what we would get back is a very high-level view of how KCS compared in any one of those categories to a number of districts across the state.
Thank you.
Moving on to items nine or 10? 11 or 12? 13 or 14? 15? Item 16 or 17? 18 or 19? 20 or 21? Or 22? All right, seeing there's no more discussion, we will vote on consent agenda. Ms. Cottney?
Item seven, consent agenda?
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on, and this will be like our normal voting meeting.
Item 8A, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-171, inter-scholastic athletics as amended.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing there is no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8B, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-110, equal educational opportunities as amended.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. All those in, sorry. Any discussion? Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
I just want to reemphasize my hesitation to take all of the protected languages out, and it just hit me this morning. My son, when he was growing up through Knox County Schools, he struggled a lot. It was never a perfect childhood, I was not a perfect mother, I don't think there are any, but he is biracial, and he had to deal with some harassment from his teacher because he transferred from an inner-city school to one of the suburban schools, and for some reason, she thought that he was involved in gang activity. So she treated him differently, and he noticed, I talked to him today, and he said that, you know, middle and high school, no problem, and the school that he was at before, no problem, but that transfer, for some reason, caused him anguish. There was a lot of rough days that year. So I just feel like students need to be seen, and everybody needs to know exactly what is protected, and I know that for any reason or on any basis kind of takes care of it all, but it still leaves it up to interpretation a little bit. And my suggestion would be a compromise to put both the for any reason and say maybe not limited to the protected groups.
Is there any more discussion on this item? Ms. Templeton?
Yeah, so I looked at the email. Thank you for sending an email earlier. No, it was pre-Halloween, wasn't it? Pre-Candy Rush.
Did you say pre-Halloween?
Pre-Halloween.
I know, right? It seems like yesterday and forever ago.
Right. Everything now has a mental event connected to it. Pre-Halloween, I appreciate that email because you included the law that was actually passed. We could look at it through the LexisNexis, read it ourselves. I did not see anywhere in there that it says that we have to make this change as dictated by the legislature, so I will not be in favor of making this change because I do not believe that it is required to do that.
Ms. Pike?
Thank you. I'm just going to agree with Ms. Templeton and Ms. Fontenot Ridley, and I would like to see it have both. I'm okay with the on any basis and then not limited to. And I'd like to, I'm a little confused about how we're moving this meeting, but if I can offer a friendly amendment, is that the section that we're in where I can do that? A friendly amendment to say with the on, well, and I know this one isn't on any basis, the one we're moving down to is, but to have that included, the full list in parentheses, not limited to.
Yeah, Ms. Christie, do you accept the friendly amendment of Ms. Pike? What's that?
Repeat that.
Yeah, can you?
So I'm going to vote on that if that helps with the dialogue.
Then we go back to the original. Okay. Can you repeat your friendly amendment again? Sorry.
Yeah, and I will try to be more clear. Sorry, I was looking at multiples.
No, no, okay.
So, to be clear, we're on J-110. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So the first line, as it's proposed to us, with, my friendly amendment is to have the first line read, "All students shall have equal opportunities with regard to programs and activities," in parentheses, "not limited to," or, gosh, I might need some help on the verbiage. Or especially with. Gary, do you recommend anything? The like specific terms?
Thank you, Ms. Pike. So I mean, what I can tell you is what the legislature tried to strike, and I think that's what you're trying to add back in, which would be race, color, creed, disability, sex, national origin, marital status, political or religious beliefs, family, social or cultural background, or sexual orientation. That's what the legislature said to delete.
Yeah, and I'm not looking to add it back in as it was, but to just have in parentheses. And so I know that that isn't regardless of, or maybe it is regardless, okay. In parentheses, regardless, exactly how it reads. I'm sorry.
So that would be a motion to amend, and you would need a second.
Okay.
Okay, so a motion by Ms. Pike, a second by Ms. Templeton. Ms. Templeton, did you have some further discussion on this?
No.
Okay. Mr. Triplett?
Mr. Dugger, what was the reason for removing it to begin with? And switching the language?
So, and this was in the email that Ms. Templeton mentioned, was that on April the 23rd of this year, the legislature amended the anti-discrimination statute for educators, and it indicated that, and that statute's 49-5-1003, specifically B-10, and it talks about deleting the language that I just read and substituting instead on any basis.
Mr. Dugger, and just to be clear, we, and I know we've talked about this, but the legal references at the bottom are all the protected groups in state and federal law. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean, the previous, I believe, J-110 had a lot of those references, but we went back in and made sure that, to include all the federal references, and of course, the federal law still applies as long as the school system continues to accept federal money.
Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
So, one thing I would ask, are other policies, do other policies have other language that's not required by the state that we use to clarify what is in the policy? And I don't have any examples, but...
Like in terms of the specific language, is this seen in other policies? That's what you're asking?
Right. Like, is there additional language in other policies that clarifies what the policy is? For instance, a word and then maybe a little bit more about that word, you know?
Mr. Dugger?
I'm sorry, Ms. Fontenot Ridley, I don't understand the question.
So we're saying on any basis, okay? Is there a way to keep that language in there? I mean, they're not saying you have to take it out, are they?
I mean, under the statute from the legislature, and again, this is the legislature. It says, delete the language that I read and then substitute on any basis.
Okay, so can we add the parentheses, like Ms. Pike? So, can we add the parentheses like Ms. Bike? Talked about? I mean, just to clarify. As long as we have the "on any basis" in the language?
I think this board can make its own policy decision. We're just making a recommendation. But the language that I'm reading says "delete and substitute." So if you're adding it back in, you're not deleting it.
And that's the law or that's just the...
That's the law. I... I mean, there's no interpret... I mean, you know, I could look up Webster's on "delete and substitute," but I mean...
Ms. Templeton.
I don't mean to be hard-headed. I am looking at the law, and I do not see the words "delete and substitute." So if you could show me where it says... I see that the legislature deleted and substituted. I do not see it telling school boards to delete and substitute. It says, "Not on any basis unfairly exclude the student for participation in a program, deny benefits to the student, or grant advantage to the student." The legislature made that decision, yes. I do not see the words. And I might be missing it because there are a lot of words in here, but I don't see the words that say "school boards need to delete and substitute."
So if you're looking for, I mean, a word-by-word, "school boards need to delete and substitute," yes. I don't see that in the law. What I see is that the legislature has amended the anti-discrimination language for students and educators by deleting the language I read and substitute "on any basis." And then the school board policies and the school board is an LEA created by the state of Tennessee are based upon this anti-discrimination statute.
And this one is written also as... It's the policy written is the educators' obligations to students. So it's written under... It was changed under the educators' section in the law.
Yes.
And we are applying that same change to the student policies and all the other policies as well.
To the student policies.
Right. Because what we're talking about is equal opportunities. It's under the Section J, which is about students.
Correct.
Right. And the change that we're referencing was about educators.
Yes. Educators and students, yes.
Right. But it's underneath the educators banner, like... Okay. Okay. So I'm just... Difference of opinion on how to handle it then. Okay.
For instance, it doesn't apply to employees.
Aren't educators employees?
The statute does not apply to employees. It applies to educators and students.
So no, like staff members in the district office, for example? That's what you're saying? As staff members?
No. What I'm saying is the board's policies on employees are different.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay. Ms. Bike.
Thank you. I guess my thought process a little bit. I absolutely understand the why you would want to... Why the legislature would kind of want to take this out because there are certainly more things that a person could be discriminated against than just this. And sometimes when you label these, it makes it appear or makes it feel as if those other things aren't also qualified. So I absolutely understand having "on any basis." And my thought process was that we're... For this policy, we're on line 10. We're taking out "because of" and taking out all of that. And then... So my friendly amendment was above where we are changing out "equal" and then having "regardless." And I think that it just adds in there those things. I think we all have experience with how people read things and how people can interpret things. And especially if you're not an attorney and you don't understand legal jargon, and you also don't understand the legal references below. And then also additionally, you have to click on the legal references and understand what they are. So that would just be my point in kind of having those still somewhat included, but not just being the only things. And still having the "on any basis." Because I kind of read it the same as Ms. Templeton, that this isn't a like mandatory delete and substitute, but this is a suggestion and then also under the idea that there are many more things you could be discriminated upon. So that's my thought process with this.
Reverend Butler?
Can you say again the motion that we're voting on right now, please?
Absolutely. So we will be voting on the amended motion. And Ms. Coney, can you read the amended motion?
I don't believe it's a final wording, but Ms. Bike wanted to make the changes as redlined, but also keep the existing language in parenthetical form within that first paragraph.
Yeah, the first and... Or the second and third lines are parenthetical, but leave the rest.
Does that make sense? Does everybody understand? Okay. Go ahead, Reverend Butler.
Call for the question.
Okay. Okay. So what we are voting on is Ms. Bike's amended motion. So we will do a roll call vote on that. And then if that vote happens to fail, we will then go back to the original item. Does that make sense, everybody? Okay. Awesome. All right, Ms. Coney.
Dr. Butler.
Yes.
Ms. Owen. I apologize. Ms. Templeton?
It's new.
Yes. The sheet I have before me has the wrong name. Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
Yes.
Ms. Bike?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
No.
Mr. Triplet?
No.
Mr. Wright?
No.
Ms. Christie? Ms. Henderson?
No.
That's four yes votes and five no votes.
Okay. Motion fails. So we will then go back to the original item B. And Ms. Coney, will you do your roll call vote on that one, please?
I would like to make a comment on this. We had comments on it prior to...
Yeah, absolutely. Reverend Butler?
So on line number nine, it doesn't quite... And maybe I'm reading, "Students may submit complaints when they believe they have been discriminated against on any basis." And it just stops there, is what I'm understanding. Is that correct? There's nothing else to add. So the items that's listed there, that's in 10, and the items that's listed there that is in... In two and three, they're covered under the laws that's listed at the bottom? Is that correct, Mr. Dupler?
Yes, Reverend Butler, that's correct.
So even though they're not listed on here, they still apply?
That's correct. And that's... I read that from one of the fiscal notes from the legislature.
Okay. So we don't say those that, but we know that they are there. So if we violate any of that, we still are subject to the federal law?
Yes, you're subject... Well, I mean, the school system would be subject to both, the state and the federal law.
Okay. So leaving it out, leaving it out of our policy doesn't mean we still have to follow it. It's like driving down the highway and the speed limit is 55. Even though you don't have a sign there, you still can get a ticket if you exceed it.
That's correct.
Okay. And that was the only reason why a lot of times having it in the policy reminds you of those things. But what I'm hearing is that we're still protected even though... I say "we" because this is subject for everyone. Any one of us can fit in one of those areas. This is not just one category of people. This is all people have those same rights. So just wanted to make sure that I understood and the public understood that just because you don't say it don't mean it goes away. So we still have to be diligent. When something happens, report it.
Ms. Templeton?
I have a very quick question. Is... I am learning LexisNexis. Is this the final bill? Because I remember last... In our last meeting, you said it wasn't that we didn't have the final bill... I mean, the final law. And this was the bill. Do we have the final law? Is that done?
Yes. I attached that to that email of October 30th.
Was that on there? Is that what I clicked on?
Yes. That's the... From the official code, which was the LexisNexis.
Perfect. Then we're working from the same thing. Our last meeting, I had asked, and you said it wasn't final. So I just wanted to make sure it was. Thanks.
There was actually a link. I said it was attached, but there's a link.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Do we have any more discussion on this item? Ms. Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say, I know we discussed this at Policy Review. I believe that the proposed changes do cover everybody as I'm reading the word all in there to include everybody.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Any more discussion? All right. Ms. Coney, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Butler?
No.
Ms. Templeton?
No.
Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
No.
Ms. Bike? Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet? Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Christie? Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Butler, would you like to change your pass vote? Ms. Bike, would you like to change your pass vote?
I'll change it to no.
That's five yes votes, three no votes, and one pass.
All right. Motion carries.
Item eight C, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-180, rights and responsibilities as amended.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing there is no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Oh, okay. All right. One no. Motion carries.
Item eight D, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-210, harassment of students as amended.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. I do believe we have a public forum speaker on this item.
Yes, would you be keen to speak, Ms. R? Candace Banister, if you'll state your name and county residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Candace Banister, Knox County resident. I need to jump back to last month for a minute. Remember I told you about someone who made a decision to interrogate Will's friends, all minors, during an investigation of the executive administrator? I didn't say who that was because I didn't think it mattered then, but since then, it has become relevant as the person who made that decision has since been named interim chief of security for Knox County Schools. These boys who were Will's friends did not deserve to be intimidated in such an aggressive way. Picking up from last month, the deputy law director had called for a state-mandated investigation based on the allegation of bullying. In early August, the KCS investigator, who is now the interim chief of security, asked to come to our house to talk with us. We agreed. Within the first 10 minutes of her visit, she had called the admin in question, who had bullied Will by his first name several times. Finally, I asked her if he was her friend, as she had called him by his first name several times, and if this might hinder her from being objective in investigating him. She said no, just that she'd seen him at principals' meetings, and he always seemed so nice. I told her in principals' meetings, he was not in charge. He was going to... He was not going to be bullying his superiors. Then she said she had a question to ask us. She said that someone downtown in central office knew she was doing this investigation and told her he didn't know why she was even bothering to do it because that kid was nothing but a drug dealer. So I need to ask you, did you know your son Will was a drug dealer? As you can imagine, we were quite shocked. But then it hit me. She was doing exactly what my brother said would happen. I told her that we did not know that, but that my brother had told me Knox County Schools would say terrible things about Will and me to intimidate us. I told her I was glad my brother had prepared me for what to expect and went on to tell her that if anyone at Knox County Schools suspected or had knowledge that my son was dealing drugs, we should have been told this information while he was alive, when we could do something about it. Coming to tell me this information, four months after my son took his life, did me no good whatsoever. There was nothing I could do with this information. She offered no evidence to support her outrageous claim. The truth is, at that very point in time, if I'd been given the choice of my child being dead or being a drug dealer, I would have chosen the drug dealer because at least he would still be alive. Thinking back, I don't really know why I allowed her to continue to sit in our home except that I was very broken and I did not want to be rude. So I sat there and let her continue. But I kept hearing those words over and over again. I felt like I was going to be sick. I needed to breathe, and I needed to try to think. But I sat there until she finished talking to us. I was still naive enough to think that she was actually going to do an investigation. Why on earth would my employer be so cruel to me in the aftermath of the suicide death of our son? Why would Knox County Schools intimidate Will's friends the way that they did? Why did Knox County send someone to my house to disparage my son to us? Honestly, if there was truth in her words, we would and should have already heard about it. I was so hurt. But sadly, the beat-down didn't stop there. I'll pick up there next month. Thank you.
That concludes public forum on this topic.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on this item? Ms. Bike?
Thank you. So, policy J-210. Just making sure to keep them separate.
Yeah, one 10, two 10, yeah.
Just like the other one, you know, I feel the same. And I absolutely understand, again, the "on any basis" and that it's important to be inclusive of all people. But I think that if we're looking at history and we're looking at how this stuff happens, that these groups are typically the ones who are the most discriminated against and often harassed based on these things. And that sometimes it's really important to name a thing because before it gets a name, you don't know. It might give you a feeling, or it might be whatever. But especially for kids and for people that are kind of in this unknowing place, it can be... It can feel uncomfortable to say like, "Well, I don't know because I'm this skin color or identify as this that, I don't know. Does that count? Is that a thing?" And it's so easy to kind of talk yourself out of stuff. And I feel like that's why it's important to name some of these things because they are things that do happen more often. And I'm not going to offer a friendly amendment on this one because I think we saw how the last one goes. I just want to state that. Thank you.
Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
I just want to say basically the same thing Kat said about the same language. You know, kids need to be seen and heard. And, you know, you say you can refer people to the laws and everything. People don't look them up before they bully somebody. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Ms. Templeton?
This is a conversation actually I quickly had with Ms. Himmelgarn. And she referred me, and I forgot to... Quite frankly, I just forgot to reach out. I wanted to ask you, would there be any reason that we would not be eligible for any federal grants or for any particular federal grant money if we take the federal protections clause out of our policies? I don't know if you know that answer.
Ms. Himmelgarn?
Madam Chair, Ms. Templeton, I may have to defer to Mr. Dupler for that question specifically, but we... If we don't follow federal law, then we compromise our ability to continue receiving federal funding. So that doesn't answer what language has to be in the policy, but to receive the federal funding, we would have to follow federal law.
Thank you. Reverend Butler?
Yes. I just want to once again say and make sure we understand that just because we don't say it doesn't mean the law does not apply. And this one, more laws are listed at the bottom. And I think the important thing to do, to know and to do is is when harassment occurs, you report it. And I know in a lot of situations, there is a fear of retaliation. And I think that's real. But I would encourage anyone that is harassed or rights are not respected and not taken into consideration, should report it. Number one, it's not going to get better not reporting it. And number two is that's how you make Knox County Schools better. So not putting it on here does not make harassment go away. So not putting it on here does not make harassment go away. But I really believe putting it on here doesn't make harassment go away. Reporting it is what makes harassment go away. I would like to see it on there, because it does say that we're following federal law in policy. But not putting it on there does not mean that we're not following it. We just got to make sure those of us who, who are affected by it have to make sure that we, we report it.
Thank you. And I want to say, I think that students, under no circumstances, should never be harassed or feel like they're being harassed. So I am thankful for, excuse me, I've been sick all last week. I am thankful for the language about reporting anonymously, so that way they feel safe under that. And also, including the language, you know, any student or staff member found to have engaged in harassment and the consequences for that. So I'm thankful for that updated language and also the cross-references to the other policies. So is there any more discussion on this item? Reverend Butler? I see you pulling that microphone down. Oh, okay. I was trying to be proactive there. All right, Ms. Cotteney, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Butler?
Pass.
Ms. Templeton?
No.
Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
No.
Ms. Bike? Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Christie? Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Butler, would you like to change your pass vote?
No.
That is five yes votes, three no votes, and one pass.
Motion carries. Moving on, Ms. Cotteney?
Item 9A, approve Tennessee Department of Education State School Improvement Grant in the amount of $2,026,435.86.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9B, approve grant agreement and receipt of Argosy Foundation Grant in the amount of $5,000 for West High School Robotics.
A motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9C, approve grant agreement and receipt of CMA Foundation Grant in the amount of $5,000 to benefit the music classroom of 2024 CMA Foundation Music Teacher of Excellence, Andrew Smith, at Powell High School.
A motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9D, approve United Cleanup Oak Ridge LLC Mini Grant in the amount of $1,000 for North Shore Elementary School STEM Projects.
Motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Ms. Morgan. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10A, approve contracts with Gibson Consulting Group Incorporated and West Ed for provision of general external evaluator services for future grant-funded projects for a term of December 1, 2024 through November 30, 2025, which may be extended for six additional years.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11A, approve fiscal year 2025 general purpose budget line item transfers for July 1 through September 30, 2024, in the amount of $654,600.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
So I'm sure this happens a lot, transferring it to other places where you need it. But on the chart that is published, there's nothing there of where it's going. Can we give any kind of idea where it's going?
I'll defer to, to Ms. Himmelgarn on that one. Ms. Himmelgarn?
Madam Chair, Ms. Fontenot Ridley. So if you look at the, the three blocks where it's grayed on the right, and then the HR talent below that, so it's taking from five different line items, but just putting them into two. Those, the four and five of those five for HR talent, if that makes sense. So if you look at all of the, on the far left column, all of the ones labeled three, the savings from those three that are, that are blocked out on the right are going to the, that, those last two of the five. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on this item? All right, seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11B, approve school nutrition fund balance designations in the amount of $250,000 for small equipment purchases and in the amount of $300,000 for large equipment purchases.
Motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11C, approve 2024-2025 Tennessee Investment and Student Achievement Accountability Report.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11D, approve adoption of State of Tennessee 457 Deferred Compensation Plan.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Ms. Morgan?
I just wanted to point out, in case anybody was like me and was a little bit confused. And Ms. Himmelgarn was very helpful in walking me through this. I know a lot of us have received communication about some retirement options, and this is a separate item. Is that right, Ms. Himmelgarn?
Madam Chair, Ms. Morgan, this is separate from the 403B RFQ that is about to be released. Yes, this 457 plan is a separate retirement benefit.
So that, the 403B is not an item we're voting on?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that's good clarification. Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
If the 457, it doesn't have to be the same company that provides the service as the 457.
The 457 and the 403, you're saying?
Yes.
Ms. Himmelgarn?
Madam Chair, Ms. Fontenot Ridley, that's, that's correct. So this is, this is electing to participate in the state's 457 plan that's administered by Empower. The RFQ for the 403B provider would, would be somewhat different. Whoever chooses to submit the qualifications to that RFQ, and then we would go through the procurement process.
All right, thank you.
So two totally different items for voting.
Yep, yep.
Are there any other questions on this item? All right, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 11E, approve schematic design package from Lewis Group Architects for additions and renovations to Sturkey Elementary School.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11F, approve 2024-2025 textbook adoption committees for science.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion on this item? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11G, approve update to staff referral bonus program.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11H, approve proposed 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan for Knox County Schools.
Motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion on this item? Ms. Bike?
Thank you. I looked through this action plan. I really like our goals that we have on it. And I'm curious if there might be a quarterly update on where we are on meeting those goals, if that will happen. I'd like to see something like that. Be great.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Yeah, Dr. Rice.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Bike. We, we can definitely do that. And I think, good news, annual, annual report that we started last year will be coming out. Look at Ms. Lotner, end of this month? End of this month, I thought, so off of last year's. Plus, at the retreat, you know, we were able to share those results too. So, yeah, we can work on a quarterly, if that's what you'd like.
Ms. Lotner?
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'll just add to that, that most of the metrics that would reside in the annual action plan aren't going to have observable indicators. So what we would be reporting on, on a quarterly basis, would really just be strategies and kind of implementation milestones, which is absolutely something we can do. I just wanted to be clear on what we would be able to and wouldn't be able to report on on a quarterly basis.
Yes, that's basically exactly what I'm asking for. What are we doing to reach these goals?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you. Any more discussion on this item? Seeing there's none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11I, discussion and possible action on resolution to meet the clothing needs of Knox County school students.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. And I believe we have public forum on this, Mr. Triplet?
We do have several public forum speakers. So we'll start with that. Tracy Ford. Tracy, if you'll state your name and county residence, and then you'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Tracy Ford, Knox County. I am the treasurer of the Knox County Schools PTA Clothing Center, and I'm here to speak regarding the PTA's nonprofit status, as that was questioned last month. The Knox County Schools Clothing Center PTA is a 501(c)(3) organization, and it is exempt from federal income tax. The PTA Clothing Center is under the umbrella of the Tennessee State PTA, as all PTAs in the state of Tennessee are. The Clothing Center has its own taxpayer identification number. It files its own 990, as required by the IRS. It has its own charitable solicitation permit with the state of Tennessee, and the solicitation permit is active through the end of this year. The organization also has a sales and use tax certificate issued by the state of Tennessee, and that certificate is active through June 30 of 2027. The organization also has in place policies for embezzlement insurance and directors and officers liability coverage. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carrie Hammond? Carrie, if you'll state your name and county residence, you'll have three minutes.
Carrie Hammond, Knox County. I am a volunteer with the Clothing Center PTA. And unbeknownst to most, and, excuse me, unbeknownst to most of us in the organization, we discovered that on June 7 in our annual reorganizational meeting, that the previous president and secretary of the Clothing Center PTA had agreed with KCS to move all of our assets from the old location at the Sears Building, where everyone could, and everyone who was a student could come and go shopping, and we were forced to move to the Cedar Bluff Teacher Depot. And there was no discussion of the actual bylaws of the organization that said you could not do this. Now, we had this June 7 meeting, and Ms. Lotner was present. And she claimed that the restructuring was partly due to an estimated 100 no-shows for the 2023-24 school year. Now, we don't know where those claims came from, but in the 21-22 school year, we had four no-shows out of an approximate 2,000 clients who came to visit us. We serve approximately 2,000 children, and because 5% of the clients didn't show as claimed, the remaining 90%, 95% of clients for whom this process worked suffered the consequences. At this meeting, KCS told us in no uncertain terms that money was earmarked in the annual budget and ready to be used to provide two paid staffing positions. Since that time, public notice of the positions has gone out, applications have been received, but we have not been allowed to review those applications or interview any applicants. Those staffing paid positions are not filled. During the summer, KCS packed up all of our assets. They moved them to Cedar Bluff. And during that relocation, clothing racks had been moved in an inappropriate manner, and large steel tables were not fully reassembled, resulting in damage to assets and a danger to our volunteers. Since that June meeting, we have been forced to delay our opening and serve the children due to the relocation of our merchandise, not being allowed on school property while school is out of session, barring us from servicing students until October 16 of this year, and obstructing the hiring of staff. But the past few months, I and my fellow volunteers, which many of them are here tonight, we've worked tirelessly to wash, fold, hang, sort, shelve, and otherwise prepare clothing for children in need. We have filled nearly 60 orders as of October, as of today, including five emergency orders this afternoon. We've all heard the saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Well, for nearly 100 years, we have successfully and efficiently served thousands of children in Knox County. And what this resolution is proposing is a start from scratch, with no plan to provide for students in the interim. I urge you to vote no on this resolution. Voting yes will deprive Knox County students of needed essential clothing until the beginning of the 25-26 school year. This is not how the volunteer state should care for its children. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Hager? If you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Susan Hager, and I'm a Knox County resident. I'm here to share my experience both as a volunteer and an employee of the Clothing Center. When we moved from the old Gratt School into the Knox Central Building, I was designated as a person responsible for setting things up and getting it running so that we could serve students. Did that as a volunteer. And then suddenly, I'm on the sub-list, and I'm subbing at the center and handing out clothing. And that developed into a full-time employment with Knox County Schools, with a supervisor from Knox County Schools, who was probably way before all of your all's time, named Jerry Wise. I followed all the Knox County Schools' policies and procedures, and I also followed all of the Clothing Center Board's directives, policies, and procedures for serving students. None of these policies conflicted. We're very similar to the Teacher Supply Depot in how we have separated away from the Knox County Council PTA and became our own independent 501(c)(3) under the Tennessee PTA. Both of our organizations receive facilities, utilities, and staff, primarily from Knox County Schools. We have a history of a 95% success rate with parent appointments. Those parents are able to choose the clothing for their child. There was a rush to move to our current model of shipping clothing to accommodate the 5% of people who were not able to make appointments. I believe there should be a hybrid model that combines both of those options. That way, parents would have a choice. If they can make an appointment and select their child's clothing, they could do that. And if not, staff could select clothing and ship it to the school so the social worker could distribute it. My question for you is this. Without issue, and for decades, Knox County Schools furnished employees who had a Knox County School supervisor, but who also ran the Clothing Center under the directive of the Clothing Center Board. What changed and why? I do have an email I would like to share with you all. And I would like to yield the rest of my time, so you have time to read it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Owen, if you'll state your name and county of residence, she'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. Jennifer Owen, Knox County. Last February, a board update included plans to give the operations and asset of, assets of the Teacher Depot and Clothing Center to the Knox Ed Foundation. I told Dr. Ryswick I couldn't keep that confidential, especially from the Depot Board I was assigned to. I explained that staffing problems came from constant changes, and it seemed that the Communications Department purposefully withheld budgeted staff. We discussed the inappropriateness of planning with another organization before having those conversations with those partnering with KCS in good faith. It appeared that KCS was facilitating a hostile takeover of two of its longtime PTA partners. The two Clothing Center officers who made plans to turn the Clothing Center over to the Knox Ed Foundation, previously the Great Schools partnerships, were and are high-ranking staff of that foundation. Ms. Lotner was previously a Great Schools employee. Ms. Harrington was hired by Great Schools Buzz Thomas. Dr. Ryswick and Chair Henderson serve on the Foundation Board, and staff and board of the Foundation have contributed to several political campaigns. and staff and board of the Foundation have contributed to several political campaigns. Regardless of the conflicts, the two who made these plans did not have the authority to do so. And had we maintained a school board representative on that board, we would have known that. In March, I told Ms. Lotner that clothing was being given in person, not delivered by social workers. She said she'd never want to remove accessibility if parents were shopping in person. But in May, the Clothing Center was told that it was being moved from Knox Central to Cedar Bluff. All assets were moved and piled throughout the Cedar Bluff building. You have pictures of those. I asked Dr. Ryswick for a meeting with Sylvia Woods. He said positions were budgeted, and he was committed to supporting and staffing the center. He asked for an MOU by December to ensure internal grant funding could replace staffing that has been supplied since the 1980s. The promise to uphold the approved budget has not been kept. The Clothing Center has been understaffed since 2023 and has had no staff for three months. Where is our budgeted staff? We were assured other organizations could be called on during the transition, but schools gave out obsolete clothing cards, and families started showing up. Ms. Christie's social worker tried to get clothing for a client. We cannot find any board member, volunteer, or anyone who turned them away. We're not sure where they went. None of our officers were contacted. However, what this board must understand is that at that time, KCS did not allow the Clothing Center to operate. We were not allowed to serve clients at that time. We cannot serve clients if KCS does not allow us to do so. We were ready to open in September and send in forms for distribution. Again, the goalposts were moved. We could not use any student information or numbers, and parents had to consent. So, while Ms. Lotner was out of town for the next week, we were expected to wait a week and then start all over. Instead, we revamped and got ready to go. We agree that student privacy is important. However, we also know that these requirements are only necessary because of the absence of KCS staff we were guaranteed through their approval in the budget. KCS allowed the Clothing Center to begin serving students on October 16th. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia Woods, if you'll state your name and county of residence, she'll have three minutes.
My name is Sylvia Woods. I live in Knox County. We, we have, as the PTA, have managed the Clothing Center from the very start. It was our initiative. It was not something that the Knox County Schools asked us to do many, many, many years ago, before my lifetime and before all of your all's. It was our initiative that we, and we have been thanked and respected for all these years. Our previous officers made a decision without approval of the membership and encouraged the move and disruption of the operations. To not cause a further disruption, we agreed to get the operation up and running as soon as possible. We had been met by roadblocks all along the way, yet we are serving clients today. Students were served by arrangement before we could get started with Cory. She was our person to talk with, and she made arrangements with some other assets that she had to take care of emergencies. Now, I don't know how many emergencies happened. I do know that there were some emergencies, and she was able to take care of that. So we had no idea that people were not being served that was in an emergency situation until we could get up and going. So, we don't understand now why, all of a sudden, we can't do the job that we've been doing and know how to do. And we've been doing it as volunteers, but we can't continue forever as volunteers. We, we do need, and especially since you told us that the staff was going to be paid for. If we had known early enough, we would have raised money. But we can't raise money when we don't know where we are, what we're doing, and what we've been told, and, and not being told the truth. We just go ahead diligently, working day after day, serving clients, doing what we need to do, and doing what we know how to do. But somehow, there's something else that has to be causing a problem, and we don't know what it is, it's not us.
Thank you. That concludes public forum on this topic.
Thank you. Ms. Christie, I'll let you speak since this is your item.
I really don't have anything else to say. I think the resolution speaks for itself, and I know everyone hopefully knows where my part is on this. I wanted to say that if it, if this resolution, resolution does pass, I would prefer not to be considered for the committee moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Pike?
Thank you. I have some clarifying questions for us to start out with. In this resolution, clarifying question. Our current fiscal year is fiscal year '25? Okay. Is this something, so this resolution is asking you potentially to make this change? Who is this asking this change for? Because I, I know, you know, we've all talked about resolutions and the weight, and do you have to do it, do you not have to do it? So if, I don't know if that would be Gary to qual, or to answer that of, if this resolution, if it passes, can these things go in effect just immediately? Or is that a person that then moves to make these changes?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Pike. I think there's been some confusion over the years by board members as far as resolutions go. Because the board has promulgated resolutions to the state legislature, those types of resolutions don't force the legislature to do anything. And so, because of those types of resolutions, I think, I think, I mean, just the, just the consideration is that, hey, resolutions, you know, don't have any weight. But that's, that's not true. I mean, you know, the board speaks through policy, and it speaks through things like resolutions. So, when the board is directing the administration and Dr. Ryswick to do something, which this particular proposed resolution does, then, then if the board approves it, then it is directing Dr. Ryswick and the administration to do what it, what it says, so.
Okay, so if this passes, essentially in effect, this would direct Dr. Ryswick to move forward with everything that it's asking for.
Correct.
And so, my, one of my concerns with this is the, realistically, like a turnaround time. We all know how long it takes to get things done. That December 30th, you know, we've, we've already seen kind of like what a move has done to kind of like make those changes. And if we were to assign this to another entity who has never had experience with serving a large district like this with clothing and the communication needs and all of that stuff, that seems like, you know, it's early November, that that's going to take more than two months to do. So that's, that's one of my biggest concerns with this. I'm always often in favor of letting someone kind of carry out a plan and then moving forward after that instead of just kind of abruptly changing things. You know, I, especially people whose hearts are really in it. And, I mean, I've gotten approximately like 40 emails, and I think a lot of times, you know, it's unfortunate that sometimes it takes something like this for people to speak up, but I think we can see how many people are in favor of this continuing. I don't know, I really don't think that I've gotten any emails that have said that they don't want the Clothing Center to continue somewhat as it is with the, under the PTA and then moving forward. I do know that there, and because I've talked with Ms. Lotner a lot about this, that there are some things that need to be put in place. And so, that's really my hesitation in voting in favor of this, is that I don't think that we'll be able to turn around in time to actually serve students and to have it shut down for essentially two months to make that change. Thank you.
Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we left last month, I had concerns about the, thanks to Knox County PTA, being a valid or certified 501(c)(3), and also their ability in terms of governing, because there was a question mark about that. Is that, I think that was answered today. I do have a follow-up question for the treasurer, if she's still here. So, first of all, if this is appropriate, I'm asking it, it may not be. What is your, your certification?
Certification as far as?
As a, as a treasurer, what's your?
I am, I'm an accountant.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, with a retired, oh, not retired, an inactive CPA license.
Okay. And do you have other funders?
Yes, we do.
Who are your other funders?
Well, we have had United Way grants. We have individual donors. We also participate in those reward programs. And then we have a trust, we're a beneficiary of a trust.
Okay. And the, the resources or the, I'm looking, the clothing items and all of the things there, that belongs to the PTA?
Yes.
Okay. So, if the PTA were to remove all of its items, it would be nothing left?
It would be, yes, starting all over.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
When we talked at the annual meeting in two days, we discussed it, and I was thinking that we had, what, what, I walked away from that discussion saying that it was something that the administration would work on and come back and advise us of what would be the best way to go. I have had a chance to go out and visit the Clothing Center. And quite honestly, don't judge me, but I didn't know the Clothing Center existed. I knew that we had something that we helped meet the needs, but I didn't know what it was. And it wasn't until it became a problem or concern that we began to talk about it. So, and so I asked the question of myself, why did it become a problem? And I hear a number of things today from, from, from those who came to speak about the displacement. Where it was, was a central area that had a bus line and was more accessible for most of, more people in the county. And now it's at a place where it is primarily, primarily, I think right now it's primarily, you send orders out. Right. And so, whatever we decide with it, I, I would love for it to be one of those places. It would be a hybrid, because it's nothing like picking out clothes for a teenager. I, I raised three. And it's, it's, it's nothing so disappointing as a parent to spend your good hard money on what you think your kids are absolutely going to love. And they leave your house looking like you dressed them. And when you get to school, they have something else on. So, I think it's, it's just having kids pick out their own clothes, having parents be involved with that process. I think that's something of merit. So whatever we decide to do, I think it's important that we do that. But also, I think that the discussions that, and I wasn't involved in it, once again, I'm just catching up, but Dr. Ryswick, there was a discussion in May or so that we would have them work, start off the school year working it, and then they would have to do a MOU by December 1st or the 1st of December. But they would continue the rest of the year with, with staffing from, from Knox County Schools. And so, that was a, I won't say a commitment, but that was a discussion that was had, and there was agreement that was made during that meeting. What changed for us to be at this resolution stage?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Reverend Butler. As far, I mean, I would say, like, I didn't bring the resolution, so I don't know I'm the best person to answer that. Sorry, Ms. Christie, but I, the, those conversations did happen. We did talk in July. I think there were conversations prior to that as well with the different board, I mean, with the different PTA leadership at different times. So, I don't know that I'm good to answer the question of this resolution being brought. It might be Ms. Christie is probably better suited to answer that question.
So, the reason why I'm asking you is because at the time of the discussion, the discussion wasn't had with Ms. Christie, it was had with you. And you were speaking on behalf of Knox County Schools with this entity that we've had a relationship with for over ninety years. So, it seems like to me, if that's where the, the agreement was had, if there was a breakdown in the agreement process or what they were carrying out and doing, I can see us taking a detour or taking a tank, going off of a tank, or going away from that. But it sounds like it is a problem.
I may be able to add one thing to it, Ms. Lotner, if you want to add to. So, the, the original conversations that began were about, about the current way it was operating with dollars going to an external agency or staff members being hired for an external agency, that that needed to be fixed. That was, there was no operating MOU, and there's not another place where we, where Knox County Board pays for positions for another organization. So, that was really what began the conversations. I think it was Ms. Lotner and that group, probably a year ago, year and a half ago. I was just involved in the, so, and at that time, different leadership for the PTA Clothing Center understood they needed to be working toward that. So, that was what began the conversations that, that there needed to be a change. That was the conversation about when there needed, you know, there needed to be an MOU to work that out that, that, you know, and again, working with the Law Department, we can't pay for another organization's folks, right?
Right.
So that was the conversation that began, I think, probably a year, year and a half ago, I'm, I'm ballparking. I got, and so with, with the former PTA leadership, that's when the decision, they were, they were moving toward my understanding to that they were not going to do the Clothing Center. And that's when I shared with you guys in the board update that there may be other organizations that'd be willing to pick it up. My conversation that I had was in July, which was basically reiterating those same things to Ms. Woods at that point, that she was saying that the P, she was now the leader of the PTA Clothing Center, and that they wanted to run it. And so I let her know then that we would need to know by December, we could no longer pay for positions, but that I would need to know in time to bring to you all as a board a budget item to consider for the following year if we would grant dollars because we couldn't afford, or we couldn't pay for the positions and manage the positions. You know, because that's still some of them reports too, and if they're absent, somebody has to cover, all those kinds of things. So at that point, that's when we were working through them to potentially bring that MOU by that time. And that was my last conversation with them, and my understanding, the same conversations Ms. Lotner has been having with them to potentially operate up till now. I don't know, Ms. Lotner, if you'd add to that.
Thank you, Dr. Ryswick. Reverend Butler, I'll ask you a question. So, are you asking what's changed from July to now from a staffing standpoint?
Well, really, I'm asking, you know, in terms of, we, last thing I heard in October, what you just explained, it made sense to me. And I understood that we were still doing things to move us from them not, because in October, when we met, they were not operating at that time. They were, they were, they were not, they were not serving students at that time. They started serving students October 16th. So they were serving students when we met at the two-day meeting. And even still, what I was hearing was, you were working it out. And so, they were still planning on running the center. They were still planning on doing a memorandum of understanding in that we were going to see in, in December what would happen. So, but when I, but now we have a resolution, I'm saying, what, what changed? And I appreciate you sending out what you sent out today. It was very thorough, and it really helped me a lot. But I, it still didn't answer the question of what has changed for us to go to the, to the resolution.
I think I understand your question now. So, like Dr. Ryswick, I would probably have to defer to Ms. Christie in terms of the inspiration behind the resolution itself. But I think your question is a good one. And I will say, just in general, that our commitment from a staff and administration standpoint is to always have a contract in place in the future where partnerships are concerned. I think this is a very good example why those written agreements are important, because this has been such a moving target, and it's hard for the, the PTA, it's hard for us. And at the end of the day, we know that it's children we have to keep our eye on, right? And it's serving the students that has to be at the forefront of our minds. So, when Dr. Ryswick initially met with the PTA back in July, you were absolutely correct. You know, that commitment was made that we would move forward with the staffing of those two positions. At that point in time, we had a staff member in place. So that, that promise was already half-fulfilled. So, there were some changes that were made over the summer. That staff member had made an ask of the Clothing Center PTA, and again, I want to take us all the way back to kind of how we got to this point. There was a deep kind of partnership that was pursued with prior leadership and a lot of honest conversations that were had with the prior leadership of the PTA regarding their concerns for the future of scaling the work to meet the needs of students. And that was not just the unfilled orders, but it was also in conversation with social workers about the barrier sometimes to social workers even using the Clothing Center, knowing the nature of that fulfillment model, that it would require parents to get all the way down to the center city to pick up those orders, and sometimes it was easier really just to call in a church partner if a family lived in a rural community, and that was, that was a barrier, that access point was a barrier. So, we had had a lot of conversations with that prior leadership regarding kind of their concerns, made that transition as part of kind of a model that they envisioned for the future of the operations of the Clothing Center. As a result of that move, the staff member that we had in place did make an ask for a travel stipend, to be able to travel to the Clothing Center, the new location of the Clothing Center. That's not something that is within our policy to grant. We do not grant a travel stipend for employees to travel from their home to their place of work, but we did say they could ask that of the Clothing Center PTA. Again, this is all going back to kind of, whose lane is it anyway, right? In terms of where that move lied, where that decision lied, and where the onus of making those transitions amenable to staff, where that responsibility lied. That travel stipend was not provided, and that was not something we made that ask of, or would have made that ask of. And so, for that reason and probably a variety of other reasons, I don't want to speak on behalf of another person, we did lose that staff member, so now we have two unfilled positions. At that point in time, our commitment to staffing those positions did not change, it was still there. We posted the positions, I think you heard from one of the speakers that once the positions were posted, there was an ask made from the PTA leadership to be very involved in the hiring of those positions. And this is where it all gets very complicated. So, we are currently going through a very similar situation with, you also heard the Teacher Supply Depot, and when we start engaging with external organizations where hiring is concerned. Something that we have to consider is that we have a lot of responsibility when we talk about hiring. We're an equal opportunity employer. There are certain things that, you know, we can't discriminate against in the hiring process. An external organization hasn't been trained on those policies and practices and those safeguards, and so when we are, when it's requested of us that an outside organization see applications for non-KCS employees, there's a pause that that initiates in us in wanting to protect those individuals. So, we had worked with Mr. Depler, this goes back, this is going back a long time, and the conclusion that we reached is, we would at a bare minimum need to redact those job descriptions. And so, that redaction process takes a while, we have an office that redacts, that's our open records office. That's been a very popular office this year, and they've got a lot of reports that they are, and requests that they are fulfilling in addition to this. So, that was a lengthy process in and of itself. We were nearing the conclusion of that process when some additional questions were raised regarding the operation of the facility, and I do want to clear just a couple of things up. The Clothing Center has asserted that they are their own independent organization, we have not questioned that. As an independent organization, they have the authority to determine when they open and how they open, and whether that is a distribution model or a hybrid model, that is not something that we dictate. And so, some of the questions that we were getting were around, why aren't we open yet? And why aren't we running with or without staff? And so, those were the types of questions that really lacked answers, should we be providing these resources to this organization? That's a very different conversation than what we had over the summer with an approved budget and a plan to staff and a commitment to make those staff, staffing those hired, those hires. So, when a board member is asking, should we be using our resources this way? I've learned a lot in a very short period of time, and now I'm questioning whether or not this is really what I, like, did I know what I needed to know when I approved that budget? And we don't have a contract to fall back on to say, no, this is what you approved, and this was the commitment that we made. We're in a very gray area, and so some of those questions did not have answers, which is why, from a staff standpoint, we did choose when we received those questions to hold off for another few weeks in that hiring process to let this conversation take place.
Okay, thank you so much for that. What I, what I'm understanding is that this resolution could act as a contract or a official plan of how we proceed with the, with the center. I would think that the question that I, the first question that I asked was, do we need this, a resolution or this resolution? And I think the question is, we need something, or the answer, we need something. We need something to give you guidelines of how we should operate.
Directions.
Directions, okay. The other thing, though, is, does this resolution correct or improve the current problem?
What I will say is that this resolution does buy us time. And I don't, Dr. Raiswick, do you want me to answer this question? You want me, I would say it buys us time, and I know Ms. Christie, or Ms. Christine, y'all just look so similar, Ms. Bike, sorry. Ms. Bike raised a question of just a turnaround in our capacity to be up and running. Ms. Christie raised that same question while she was developing this proposal. She reached out to myself, she reached out to Ms. Willis, I know Ms. Willis has worked with Dr. Brown as well. What I will say is that we will be prepared to take on the operation of a facility of this kind and the distribution of student clothing items beginning in January, if that is the will of the board. In terms of addressing all of the challenges, no, I don't think it addresses every single one of the challenges, because I think we still need to explore the long-term future of the Clothing Center and what operation of a facility of that kind should and could look like. So, this really just buys us time and certainty and continuity in services is what I would say is potentially a change. But I don't want to say that it would solve all of our problems. I think we still have a lot of work ahead of us to do that.
So, if I may just step, a couple of more steps. Number one is that if, according to the resolution, it would be staffed by the School Culture Department, would that be, would that be the hiring of the two new staff persons being hired to do that? Would that be existing? Are we still talking about that?
I think it would. I'm loud, am I allowed to talk when this thing's on?
Yeah, we can hear you.
So, what I will say is that I think we would need to make some...
Oh, yeah, I think there's too many on. So, no, I'm not allowed to talk when it's not on. Okay, it's on now. So, what I will say is, those are some decisions we still have to make. What you do see in the resolution, and this was something that we worked with Ms. Christie on, was just that there may be a provision of resources that are needed. Someone identified the fact that we would not have assets in the Clothing Center. So, there may be a need to purchase clothing items, there may be a need for some provisional staffing. I can't speak to Ms. Heather, to Ms. Willis's entire plan, but I do know they have a number of social work interns that she has said would be able to be deployed pretty quickly if needed, and they've got some staff members who are very familiar with the work, with the needs of students and could, you know, fulfill those needs in a model that I honestly can't say would look exactly like what the current model looks like, but would be able to identify and meet needs as they arose.
So, if we had, and this is something that it may be the PTA would answer, but if, if they had the two employees that they were, it was a commitment made for them to have, if they had the two employees, and if the two employees were hired according to the policy that, or the practice that we have, if they're going to be Knox County Schools employees and Knox County School hires them, with the consideration of what the job's going to be, and the PTA takes what you have. That's, that's the policy, right? Is that what has happened in the past?
I've, I've...
In the past, you all hired someone, and the PTA took that person you hired, that person followed to Knox County Schools. I think it was you, Ms. Susan, who said that? And so, so I guess what I'm saying is, is that the person who is hired is hired by Knox County Schools, and then they go work with or work for the PTA.
That is a gray area, so I think it depends on who you ask and what moment in time you are referring to. So, what I will say, and I've had, you know, really great conversations with Ms. Woods and with her team, and something we've all talked about and been very honest about is that we probably did, over time, see a transition of more and more staff-led operation at the facility. And so, there was a heavy investment on behalf of the Public Affairs Team that was made in guiding and directing those staff members as their direct reports, and more of just kind of report out to the PTA Board. And so, in terms of having witnessed this PTA Board directly manage staff, we have not witnessed that. But I don't want that, I do not want to say that that is not feasible. I just want to say that I can't comment on what-ifs in that regard, because we don't have a precedent to fall back on.
So...
I think, Dr. Raiswick, did you want to jump in?
I mean, if you don't care, sorry, just to kind of, no, good job, Cory. Your light came on, mine wouldn't, so, good. So, I just, I think I kind of want to say this too, just for everything. I think comments on some of the resolution, on some of where we are, I just want to make it really clear, this is extremely important work. Our students do need clothes, and I just want to say, the goal of our staff is twofold, to serve the most kids that we can and to serve them the most efficiently that we can. What we don't need is kids who are going through those things to be waiting for that kind of stuff. I think looking through kind of where we are, and when I read through Ms. Christie's resolution when it was posted, I think that it really allows, what it allows in that is an open process for the best possible. I'm always looking for that. If you guys don't know anything from me for the last two and a half years, I'm always looking for continuous improvement. If that means sometimes the people we have now, or that means somebody else, my job is to make sure our kids are getting the best things. I do think this allows for that kind of open process, and most of the time, best decisions are made in those open processes. I like too, that this doesn't eliminate this resolution in organization. The PTA, I would assume, would apply and be part of that. It gives them more time, and any other organization, there may not be another organization, I don't know, that would be part of that, but it gives everyone more time to put those proposals together and for us to make the best decision for students moving forward, who can serve the most students the most efficiently. And again, it may be the PTA Clothing Center Board may be the best one for that, and that would be great. And I just want to reiterate too, what Cory was saying. Our Social Work Department has the capacity to take this over in the interim, so kids won't be out while we go to make that best decision. And then it gives the Board the best chance to decide, moving forward, who the best partner is to deliver the service for our kids. So, I just don't want to lose track of the fact that we want to make sure we're serving the kids. That's our number one thing, despite all the other feelings and all the other conversations. So, I just wanted to say that to kind of close maybe where Ms. Lotner was.
Okay, well, thank you so much. What I'm going to do is put some closure on what I'm trying to say. And that is, number one is that, number one is, is that we have an organization that has had a commitment made to them, and they have been trying to carry that commitment out. And one of the major pieces that they lacked in carrying that out was the two employees that was promised to them. If they had those two employees that were promised to them, we may not have the problems and concerns we have right now. And so, I think that we have to, if they worked hard, I mean, these are volunteers that were working, you know, a few hours a day, and now they worked, they've worked in the last month or so several hours a week. And they've done their part. In a sense, Knox County Schools haven't fulfilled their part by giving those two, those two workers. So, the other thing that I would say is... Well, I don't think you can, because I have...
Oh, well, Ms. Woods, you, to speak to the Board, it's through public forum, and so you already did have your three minutes of public forum.
I don't think I said about three minutes, but there's several things to...
Well, Ms. Woods, Ms. Woods, I appreciate you being here and all of your service, but we have to have our Board discussion, please. Thank you.
Thank you for what you're saying, I understand everything you're saying. You all don't know no story, but I would have to say the story somewhere, and I would rather say to you all.
I apologize, Ms., Madam Chair, I'm sorry for trying to do your job.
No, 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 you're good, you're good.
So, what I was saying was this, that we haven't given this organization an opportunity to complete the task or complete the part of the agreement that they made to us and we made to them. We haven't given them that staff person. So, I would, I think the resolution of having the culture, and I want to say it right, the School Culture Department, if, once again, if those people, two persons come out of their department, work with the PTA, they already have folk on the ground, they already have folk in the building, and that, those, as Ms. Susan said, you had the person working for Knox County Schools and working under the policies of the PTA for the Clothing Center. And they would present their memorandum, their MOU, December 1st, and we go through the process that we talked about. My problem with this is, is that we made a, we made a commitment with a group of people, and they've done their part, and now we're saying, and we haven't done ours. And now we're saying, okay, we're going to ask you, we're going to have you leave in, what, thirty or sixty days? If it was less than sixty days, they got to be out by December 30th. And all the things that you've collected, all the funds that you've been given to do this, we're going to, that's what we, that's what we're doing? So, that's, that's why I am with it, I think that there is a, and I appreciate the staff doing what you've done, because this is a lot, a lot of tangled. I would use the word mess, but I don't want to sound negative. But I just think that the way that we're doing it is not quite the way that we should do it.
Thank you. Who's next?
Ms. Fontana Ridley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with a lot of what Reverend Butler said. I remember at the workshop we were at, them talk, we were talking about a deadline where they had to get the MOU in in order to put it on the agenda for December, and I believe that date was the 11th or the 15th.
Like mid?
Okay. Well, 16th is a Saturday. But I'm just wondering, are we acting, are we not acting in good faith? Are we acting in bad faith if we don't give them the opportunity to get the MOU in so that the process that has been laid out actually works? I know there have been a lot of stumbling blocks from the beginning. I was over there volunteering the other day, and in two hours, I packed five boxes. So, the work is being done, and it's being done way more efficiently than I did.
I think, I'm sorry, I mean, I think Ms. Christie can...
Yeah, I just want to speak to, you know, when we're talking about what prompted the change. One, the resolution is in part in response to what I heard other board members say at the retreat and as well as at the last board meeting, that they would like to see other options, and this is that. But the other thing that changed is this push to have the employees ahead of the MOU, and I know I've spoken with Gary about it, my questions are around the employee that we hire that answers to a completely different outside body, and, you know, what's the chain of command? I have a lot of questions about that outside of a written agreement, and we're asking to be, place these employees before we have the agreement. That, that's one of my biggest concerns. And just to speak to the capacity, I will say that I did speak at length with Ms. Willis in Dr. Brown's office. in, in Dr. Brown's office. I, I think we can all agree that the legacy and the work the Board has, this Board has done. Nothing in the resolution would prevent them from continuing that. And it's just an option. People ask for options, and this is an option. But I do have concerns about hiring an employee outside of anything in writing at this point.
Thank you for that clarification.
So if they were able to provide an MOU by November 15th, which is that Friday.
Yeah, I think it's like November 13th is the, the deadline for the agenda items.
Okay. If they were able to supply that MOU, would we be able, or Knox County Schools be able to, once that MOU is accepted, be able to hire those positions, I mean, as quickly as they can? I mean, I, I don't.
Well, the other thing is, should the MOU be accepted, right? Because we haven't seen it. So if you hire somebody prior to the MOU, and the MOU were not accepted, what kind of position have we put that employee in?
Well, if you say that it's going to be the Culture Department, School Culture Department employee, then they would supervise that person for whatever came in place of that. So if the person works for Knox County Schools, Ms. Susan explained when she was hired, she was supervised by a person from Knox County Schools.
Well, let's, let's kind of stay the course of action here. I know, Ms. Fontana Ridley, you were.
Yeah.
And Christie was just answering, answering her questions.
From what I understand, the MOU is not even for this year, but it is supposed to be turned in by December. And we wouldn't see an MOU until somebody creates it and, you know, puts it forth. But the issues that I, what I understand are that the reason they weren't getting any, any clothes out was because they were kind of in a spot where they couldn't take orders, they couldn't get them out. It was just communications, computer, having access to how to do the orders. So it was, it wasn't because they didn't want to do it, they didn't, it wasn't because they didn't know how to do it, it was just that they weren't being given the support that they needed to do it. So, you know, if, if a position is promised to be hired, or somebody, you know, the position is created to get the work done, and I understand about contracts, I understand about MOUs, but I feel like we're not acting in good faith if we don't give them the opportunity for the MOU and to get that out there. In part of it, it was talking about assets that would be handed over. What exactly does that entail? What are the assets?
Can you speak specifically to that language? I don't believe that.
It says, be it further resolved that the Clothing Center should have all assets removed from the Cedar Bluff Auxiliary Campus by December 30th, 2024, to provide a smooth transition to KCS operations.
Right. We're not asking them to turn over their assets to us. I mean, that, we were, we're keeping the door open for them to pick the work back up.
Right. I'm just, are the assets, the actual clothes that they have, the?
I left that open for their interpretation. I would not want to take anything that they felt rightly belonged to them.
And I also know that they have funding still in their, in their bank account.
Again, that is, that's their asset. They're a completely separate organization. When you're talking about hiring an employee that answers to complete, I mean, what's in their bank account, their clothing, all that, I'm not, I assume they consider that their assets.
And, so, I don't know exactly. So it also, the next one said that KCS Maintenance Department shall assist in the removal and relocation of the Clothing Center PTA assets as requested by the Clothing Center PTA Board. So would they take their assets and do some, like sell, not sell them, they wouldn't sell them, but make them available to some, I mean, so then somebody else has to come in and buy all new stuff to create a service that doesn't need to be interrupted?
Potentially.
Potentially. I mean, it's, I mean, I've worked retail, I've worked a lot of jobs, but it's not easy to turn over, flip over, whatever you're selling or whatever you're giving. It's not easy to make that transition. I mean, it's not just, it's not like a weekend, it's a couple of months. So students would be without the services, seems to be.
Students, I believe, have been getting services all along through other agencies. Is that correct? And our social workers have been doing the brunt of that, right?
That was my question. I assume, are the social workers capable of, okay, so they're comfortable in taking on this?
So can I, can I ask the Clothing Center, how many orders have you filled so far?
I think, do we have to vote to have that?
We have to vote to have our speaker down. Somebody else can come up and speak.
We have to vote. Since October 16th, with volunteers only, we have filled 59 orders today, this afternoon. Part of that 59 was five emergency orders that I filled today before I came here. All right, thank you. So there, it appears that they're doing the work, right? I don't know how many orders they had that they haven't filled, but I think we ought to, we need to give them a chance to prove that they can do it before we yank it away from them. Just my feelings.
Ms. Templeton?
I'm going to be very brief. Sorry, pull that down. As of right now, there are clearly orders being filled as they come in. And the Clothing Center is doing their part, I believe, in December. I was under, I mean, October, I was also under the impression that we weren't going to all act in good faith and let them get the MOU in and then make this decision. So I feel like that is where KCS integrity lies, and so that's where I'm standing.
Ms. Morgan, I'm going to give you a chance, just because you haven't had a chance to speak at all.
Thank you. Okay, first of all, I do want to say thank you so much to everybody who's here tonight and all of the PTA Clothing Center volunteers. You all have given your time, your talent, your resources to run the organization, some of you for many decades. And it is very important, like Dr. Ryswick said, it's so important. And I think we can all agree that it is tremendously important work, and it's a wonderful cause. I do believe that this issue is very important. I find myself frustrated about the amount of time that we have spent on this topic. I've been on the Board for two months now, and we've spent over 10 hours as a Board as a whole discussing this topic. And that is frustrating to me because I sit here as the parent of a third grader, and I know what a lot of other third grade parents, I am thinking across the county, they worry the same as I do, that we're trying to make sure that we're reading and doing the best that we can to face the pressures on our third graders. And it is, and all of our students, really, it's frustrating to me that we have had more conversation about the Clothing Center than we have about student achievement and increasing third grade proficiency and increasing our students' math abilities and all of that. So while I do very much appreciate what's going on at the PTA Clothing Center, and I, I do not want to say PTA Board is, is totally done or out. The thing I do appreciate in the resolution is that it does give the PTA Clothing Center the same opportunity as anybody else to be able to, to bid, or whatever that process is going to look like, to be able to continue doing this important work, and perhaps in that time, be able to, to allow Knox County Schools to get our ducks in a row and know where we need to stand. And Reverend Butler, you said you didn't want to use the word mess because you didn't want to be negative. This is a big old mess. And I think we've all gotten, I, I mean, we've gotten to this place, and I think we all can feel the tension and the mess that goes with this. And again, it is wonderful work. I so value it, needed in our community. But I am not okay with continuing to have conversations at the Board level of this nature. That is not what we're actually trying to do. Our, our job is to educate kids, and this is important, but there's a lot of wonderful, wonderful people who, who have stepped in and will continue to. So for that reason, I will be voting yes for the resolution, as I believe we need to efficiently and effectively move forward in this work, and this will allow time for everybody to get their ducks in a row. And then we can come back via the committee, as proposed in the resolution, and take some steps forward there.
I totally agree, and I'll be voting yes for the same reasons.
I'd like to call for the question. Let's vote.
Second.
We have Board forum, it's fine.
Do we have to have a call question? Yeah. All right. Should we do a roll call or just vote? All right. All right. So there's a motion by Mr. Triplett to call a question. A second by Ms. Christie. All that's in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed. All right, let's do a roll call. Yep.
Dr. Butler?
Nay.
Ms. Templeton?
Nay.
Ms. Fontana Ridley?
No.
Ms. Byg?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Yea.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
That's five yes votes and four no votes.
All right, motion carries, so we'll go ahead and vote on this item.
So I believe there is a motion on the floor for discussion and possible action. Do we need an official motion for the resolution?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Will you do a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Butler?
No.
Ms. Templeton?
No.
Ms. Fontana Ridley?
No.
Ms. Byg?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Mr. Ry?
Yes.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
That's five yes votes and four no votes.
All right, motion carries. Yes. Mr. Triplett, do we have more public forum speakers?
We do, and I appreciate them waiting through all the things. Emily Samino, I may have said your last name wrong, and I do apologize. But if you will state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
You did say it correctly, which most people don't, so that's great. So it's Emily Samino in Knox County. Thank you, Board members, for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of the Retirement Choices and Security of the Valued Employees of Knox County Schools. My name is Emily Samino. This is my third year working with valued teachers, and I love partnering with Knox County Schools and being able to help educate staff and teachers on their retirement benefits and Tennessee State Retirement. As representatives of National Life Group and valued teachers, we recognize the Board's commitment to offering KCS employees the best benefits and financial opportunities available. We understand that recent proposals aim to streamline vendor offerings in the 403B plan. However, we respectfully urge the Board to reconsider moving to a single vendor system. Limiting this choice could reduce the quality, diversity, and security of the retirement options available to KCS employees. The valued teachers team of four has conducted over 1,000 one-on-one consultations just within the past few months alone, meeting employees where they are and explaining complex financial concepts in easy-to-understand terms. Our passion is to educate and to be a resource to all Knox County employees through yearly meetings and accessibility. Education is our priority, helping them navigate to achieve their goals. This level of personal service, offered entirely free of charge, not only educates employees, but also helps them make informed choices for their retirement. One valued educator stated, and I quote, "Although I am not a valued teacher client, she, the valued teachers' agent, has been especially helpful to me. She has given me guidance over the past three to four years with my 401K and my TCRS accounts. In addition, she always makes herself available to answer any questions and all questions I have about my retirement accounts via text, emails, or phone calls. She has even helped me outside of her work hours. She always makes time to explain my benefits to me and helps me understand how I can get the most out of my retirement," end quote. Moving to a single vendor option approach could reduce this essential level of support, leading to confusion and dissatisfaction among employees who value having access to knowledgeable retirement consultants. Thank you for considering the significant impact of maintaining choice and diversity within the KCS 403B plan offerings. We look forward to continuing to serve KCS and its dedicated employees with the highest standards of integrity, education, and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Whipple? Julia, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Julia Whipple, Knox County. So I want to thank the Board for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Retirement Choices and Security of the Valued Employees of Knox County Schools. I've been with valued teachers for more than nine years, but I've been married to a Knox County educator for more than 27. My husband is a 27-year Knox County educator, and we've been married for 27 years. I just thought about that. Valued Teachers was instrumental in helping my husband and I prepare for retirement, so much so that I joined the company. In the 19 years prior to me joining the company, no one had ever taken the time to really explain his retirement plan to him. We understand that recent proposals aim to streamline vendor offerings in the 403B plan. However, we respectfully urge the Board to reconsider moving to a single vendor system. Limiting this choice could inadvertently reduce the quality, diversity, and security of retirement options. One of the reasons stated for moving to a single 403B provider was simplifying plan administration. Make no mistake, third-party administration, or TPA, would streamline compliance with IRS, minimize errors, and reduce district liability at no cost to the district or the client. It is imperative, though, that the TPA be neutral, which is to say, independent of any one chosen vendor. It's interesting enough that we learned from KCS procurement today that the bid is for a 403B administrative services, which is not what we were told, and feels deceptive. A single vendor, single TPA approach may also pose compliance risks, as IRS rules typically support choice of 403B offerings to meet the diverse needs of public employees. A single vendor setup might inadvertently limit compliance flexibility. Across the country, school districts offer multiple 403B vendors. Recognize the importance of choice and empowering employees to select the plan best suited to their needs. Limiting KCS employees to a single option may signal a lack of flexibility that would impact morale. Simplifying plan administration should not be a roadblock in providing employees choice in their 403B benefit. Neutral TPAs will accommodate multiple vendors at no cost to the district. We welcome the opportunity to discuss this further and provide more details. Our commitment is to ensure KCS employees have the tools, education, and personalized support they need to retire confidently and securely, with the freedom to choose the retirement options that best suit their individual goals. Thank you for considering the significant impact of maintaining choice and diversity with the 403B plans. But in times like these, when there's so much pressure on our teachers, pressure where they, that they absolutely have no choice, option, or control, why would the district want to take yet one more very personal choice away from them when it's not necessary? Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Brandy Gerald? Brandy, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Brandy Gerald, Knox County. Thank you, Board members, for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Retirement Choices and Security of valued employees of KCS. I've had the privilege to serve your school district for the last 11 years as a National Life Group valued teachers representative. We currently have 28% of KCS employees as clients, which is the equivalent of two, over 2,100 staff members. They are not clients to us, however, they are valued relationships. CEO Bentley Christopher of valued teachers is in attendance, as Knoxville is near and dear to valued teachers. Bentley's husband's family, the Hannah family, all graduated from UT and moved to Knoxville in 1945. The Hannah family has been tied to education for over 40 years. Also joining us today from National Life Group are Darlene Flag, Head of the Retirement Business, and Stock Craybaum, Chief Counsel for Retirement Business. We understand that KCS intends to put out a procurement for the 403B vendor, single vendor provider. We recognize the Board's commitment to offering KCS employees the best benefits and financial opportunities available. We understand the impending proposal, which we plan to participate in, aims to streamline vendor vendor offerings in the 403B Plan. This has caused concern for the valued teachers NLG representatives, as well as a growing number of KCS employees and staff. We respectfully urge the board to reconsider moving into a single vendor option. Limiting choice could inadvertently reduce the quality, diversity, and security of retirement options available to KCS employees. Earlier tonight, you voted to move to the 457, excuse me, the 457 to the state plan, which is in power. You were able to do so because the 457 providers fell below the mandatory participation for the district stated in the plan document agreement. Earlier this year, the 403B list was reduced in the same manner to two due to participation stated in the plan document and supporting documents. The plan document and supporting documents are the agreements that valued teachers NLG went into with KCS in 2002. What benefit to the school district? Is it to remove one, if not both, of the proven providers out of the district? Why now? Is the goal to go 100% to the state plan? Is this the reason KCS is moving to a single provider? Why? Why would you disenfranchise 2,100-plus clients and deny them personal service with representation that they value and trust? If so, the real question is, is the district helping the state to benefit the teachers or using the teachers to benefit the state? I would ask, have you surveyed the KCS employees to see what they would like in the choice and personal service they want in their 403B? Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Rocliff? Sandra, if you'll state your name and county of residence, she'll have three minutes.
I'm Sandra Rocliff, Knox County. I'm not going to reiterate everything that everybody else has said. I'm having a huge deja vu here because I used to speak to this elected body a great deal. I served in many capacities within school PTAs in this district when my four grown children went through school here, culminating in six years of service as the president of Knox County PTA. I'm saying hi to all my old PTA buddies. It was in that role that I came to understand, appreciate, and advocate for teachers, both here in Knoxville and in Nashville at the state level. Although my role is different now in valued teachers, I continue to advocate for teachers. Now they're my clients. We understand here that recent proposals aim to streamline vendor offerings in the 403B Plan. However, we respectfully urge this board to reconsider moving to a single vendor system. Limiting this choice can inadvertently reduce the quality and options available to your KCS employees, as no one financial company can offer the options your KCS, KCS employees have come to expect. In fact, your own website brags about offering teachers options and choices in retirement. No one company can offer a variable market-based option as well as a fixed-indexed, risk-averse, non-market option. Fixed-indexed annuities offered through valued teachers and National Life Group are structured to protect principal while still offering growth potential through indexed linked interest. In times of market uncertainty, these products give employees peace of mind, knowing that their retirement savings won't be subject to market losses. They also offer tax-deferred growth and provide guaranteed life income options in retirement, enhancing the overall retirement portfolio for KCS employees. A fixed-indexed annuity is an insurance product. Only insurance products can guarantee lifetime income. One client comes to mind who's currently 60 years old and taking advantage of this future lifetime income option. If asked to move to a new company, she will no longer be eligible to contribute to her valued teachers 403B. This absolutely will affect her lifetime benefit that she is looking forward to receiving in just a few short years. KCS employees currently have the flexibility to choose products that match their individual risk tolerance and financial goals. Restricting such options may leave employees with fewer ways to protect and grow their hard-earned savings and not outlive their savings in retirement. I thank you for considering all of our points tonight. We would welcome any more questions and provide further information at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexis Rhodes? Is there an Alexis Rhodes in here? There is not. Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Thank you, Mr. Triplett. I know since we combined both of these meetings, excuse me, board forum got left off of the agenda since we're going off of a regular session agenda, so we do not have board forum on this agenda. It would have to entertain a motion in a second to put that on. So there's a motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Ms. Fontenot Ridley. Any discussion? On discussion? All right, Ms., if seeing there's no discussion. Ms. Coney, could you do a roll call vote, please? Thank you.
Dr. Butler? And this is a motion to hold public forum, to hold board forum.
To put, to put that item on the agenda, basically.
Ms. Templeton? Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
Yes.
Ms. Bike?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Christie?
Pass.
Mr. Triplett?
No.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
That is seven yes votes, one no vote, and one pass.
All right. So, motion carries, so we will have board forum. Reverend Butler? Oh, I am so sorry, Sophia. Sophia. I'm so sorry, I missed you.
All I have to say is, I, this has nothing to do with, like, everything that went on in the meeting today, so I'm so sorry, but.
You are good.
The school store that has to go on with the 865 academies in halls and a few other schools are having massive issues constructively, and my teacher just, next to me, didn't say to bring it up, so. So, yep.
We'll get on that. I appreciate you, by the way, and the issues that you do bring up. You're very thoughtful in your discussions and questions, thank you. Reverend Butler? Ms. Templeton? Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
Well, yes. I just want to thank the staff and the kids at Cedar Bluff Middle School. Dr. Iswick and I joined them for their, I'm going to say this right, Mururon? Sister city celebration, which they are a sister city from Japan.
That's cool.
And so, it's like an exchange program. And there, we had Cedar Bluff students who performed and Japanese students who performed, and it was so much fun. And I want to say that I appreciate valued teachers immensely because they handled my retirement, and it was a, it was a lovely little payout when I retired, so, thank you.
Mr. Triplett? Ms. Bike?
Thank you. All of us sitting up here in front at minimum are paid. We all, with the exception of Sophia, I understand this is volunteer, and thank you so much, this is very important. But, and especially for the nine board members, this is our job. It's really important for us to be here. This is one of our number-one priorities, is to create policy, make policy, amend policy, and guide the KCS on what the will of the board is. We speak for our constituents, we all signed up for this willingly, and so, as paid people, I mean, we've, we've been here for two hours and 15 minutes. I feel like that's not that big of an ask for what our salaries are. And so, I think it is, we also ask the audience to be quiet when we're talking because this is our meeting. This is the only time that we get to come together, and, you know, fortunately, unfortunately, it's all public. And there are reasons that it's public. I find it extremely disrespectful that when a board member is asking for clarification, that it's whispered that we're wasting time, and I just, I find that it's poor boardsmanship, and that any of that would be not okay, that we wouldn't accept that from the audience to say things like that, and I don't think we should accept it from ourselves and from our fellow board members. So, I would appreciate it if that didn't happen anymore in our board meetings. And I would also appreciate that if we were passing notes, that it would be clear that those notes should not have anything to do with what we might be voting on, because that there are reasons that we have sunshine laws. And I'm sorry, I'm just really upset. So, that's all I have.
Ms. Morgan? Mr. Wright? Ms. Christie? All right. Well, I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving and safe travels to our board members to TSBA later this week. And with that, we are adjourned.